Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Assessment to order for Wednesday, February 13, 2019.
And call to order the special meeting of the Board of Finance, same date.
Have we done the pledge? So, why don't we move on? Before we call the first person up to the table, I'd like to just preface with a couple remarks, as I always do. It's been our practice for the last 10 years to have the Board of Finance see the raw data that each department head puts in. And if you're, if we're still not used to that, just to remind you, it used to be that the selectmen would edit things and try to bring the numbers down to a certain level before you saw it. Seeing as how, excuse me, the Board of Finance is a really not even equal partner, you guys have the last say. And it's kind of an unusual arrangement because in many other towns, the Board of Finance has presented a final budget number by the selectmen. They don't really see the line-by-line stuff. So, it's always been my policy to make sure that you see everything because you, I think it's important that you understand what the department heads' requests are and why they're asking for what they are. Then the selectmen will go through and we'll do our thing after you've seen all the presentations. So, with that, I'd like to, I'm first, but I don't need to go first. So, I'd like to start with 1:30 Town Clerk. Lisa, can you come up and we'll just go numerical order for that.
Sure. Hello. How's everybody? I wanted to first thank you for last year's increase. It brought me up to a level that's more in line with the town clerks. I'm not the lowest paid anymore within the town clerks association in Fairfield. So, that was a blessing. Thank you. As you can see, I've put some, a lot of information in there. Did the chart. I did my usual town clerk revenue comparison. We are, if you look at the chart, we're thirty, about thirty, approximately $39,000 average increase over the last three fiscal cycles. And we are a revenue generating office. You know, budgetary expenses really do not rely on our property taxes, and we're unique in that way. As our revenue exceeds our budget expenses, and I have documentation to back that up. So, we are halfway through the year and projected to come out at an increase over last year. Conveyance is out, property sales are way high, Bethel's booming. That's reflected in the conveyance tax that we take in, and those are all property transfers and state taxes that are charged upon a sale of a property. You also look at 2017, 2018, legal action pending, and foreclosures are significantly down over the previous year. And this year, it's about on the same trajectory. So, things are good. I'm not asking for an increase, keeping it fiscally conservative. I think that's extremely important. I am fiscally conservative, just as a general rule, and if I can save money in places, I will. Juggle different accounts. I didn't have to do that this year. Last year, I did. We now have three certified town clerks in my office. We scored huge with the addition of Josh in my office, Josh DiBella. He just obtained his certification. He came to us from Bridgewater. He has a, going for his second master's degree in accounting. God knows why he's with me, but he is brilliant. He's also bilingual. He's the only one in the building that speaks Spanish, so he's being pulled in different directions all the time. So, he's a huge asset to my office and gives me a sense of confidence. So, that's me, sorry. What else? There's a new responsibility in my office with the daily parking in the Metro North lot. The kiosk is a little more labor-intensive for me. We used to just give out daily permits at the office, write the date on them, hand it to the people parking, and then they just disappeared. I kind of took over the whole operational thing. I kind of fell asleep, so I'm not one to sit back and watch it happen. So, I got in there, got it going, got it installed, and took over kind of the management of the kiosk myself. So, I have it on a, it's a web-based program, so I have it where I can log in. I can see how many people are parking, what the revenue is, when it needs to be changed with the coin box, when it needs new receipt paper. There's a lot more to it. We get phone calls on a regular basis. Usually, if I don't hear from anybody, things are working well. You know, I have to issue refunds if they're overcharged, things like that. So, that's an added responsibility for my office and basically me. So, I mean, I'm asking you for an increase as, not a huge increase, but to keep it in a level that you brought me up last year, and I don't want to fall behind again. We wait four years, I'm going to be behind again. And, you know, I'm not asking for a huge amount of money. There is additional responsibility with the train. So, that's basically where I'm at. So, any questions?
Yes. What was your revenue?
Our revenue?
Yeah.
For last year?
Yeah.
Town retained was $583,369.
Do you have a breakdown, Lisa, of what that was?
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the fish.
Is it where the dispatch was?
Yeah.
So, just give me a second.
Lisa, I'm sorry. I'm going to ask the per unit question. Is there anything that we can squeeze more revenue out of for your office?
I, not really. A lot of these fees are statutory. You know, with the land record recording, that's all, my hands are tied there. Vital records are tied. So, everything we do, and I think I've mentioned that last year, is like over 500 duties that a town clerk fulfills.
Right, right.
They're, it's in the statutes, most of them. So, I did increase the notary fees. It's just little things like that that I can do. Other than that, really, no.
The revenue from the parking lot, that goes through the?
That's huge.
That goes through?
Well, no, yeah, it goes to the general fund, but I have to tell you, last year, January, for the month of January, the daily parking was, oh, this past January, $1,636.23, just in daily parking. That doesn't include the annual permits.
You're talking the train station, right?
Train station, daily parking, kiosk only.
That does not go to the general fund. It's held in a general fund, but it's reserved for the train station maintenance.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, that's.
But then, yeah. But then, there's a split there. Half of it's every five years, you're supposed to, every five years, it's supposed to audit it.
Well, if the state requests 50% of the account, we have to give them 50% of the account.
Right.
But just like when we just did all the work down there?
Right.
It came out of that account.
Yeah.
So, it's really enterprise fund.
Well, I thought the state did the work on the expansion.
Well, they did a lot of the work, but anything that we had to do for the property came out of that account.
Well, that's, yeah, it's being maintained that way.
Yeah, yeah.
We had to replace a drain pipe.
Oh, okay.
Star drain pipe, and that wasn't covered by the state.
Right.
But that fee, that didn't come out of taxpayer funds.
Right.
It came out of the train.
Right. Well, last year, 2018, we only instituted this kiosk, I think it was the end of January, February. Daily parking was $12,321.55.
Wow.
So, and daily is fifty, today, $53 in credit card charges and $261 in coin. So, I have all that. I can look at that daily. I can look at operations. I can look at if there's a failure, if there's a problem with connection. I call San Diego and I go, I troubleshoot. So, that's an additional, additional responsibility.
How much time are we spending on that?
I do it every day. It depends on the phone calls. If there's problems, then I got to get on the phone and I got to talk to the.
Are you ballparking, amount of hours?
Maybe an hour a day. A week, I would say maybe three hours a week, if that. I mean, that's, that's a high estimate, yeah.
So, Lisa, I've parked there a couple times this year, and I was pleasantly surprised at how inexpensive it is to park there. But should we be charging more?
That has.
Because it seems very inexpensive.
That has to go through the Department of Rail for approval. 2006, I had petitioned to raise the parking, annual parking fees from $150 to $250, and they approved it. So, it has to be a proposal, and it has to be approved by the Department of Rail.
I mean, I don't, you know.
25 cents an hour is very low.
Yeah. Compared to New York, I mean, I go to New York to Purdy's or whatever.
Right.
It's eight or $12 for whatever.
Right. And we, we charge from 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and then weekends and holidays are free. But, yeah, you're right. That could be something I could look into.
I mean, I would just look into it in terms of what the surrounding towns are charged, so that we know we're comparable, right?
Well, Reading, yeah, they just increased their fees. But they lost, they lost the parking from them. They came over here. I can't give you that. I can get that information to you, but I know they just increased their per hour fee. I think it's a dollar per hour.
Sure. Dollar per hour, and there's no?
That's, I guessed.
Like daily parking?
There is daily, that is daily parking. And then they sell, they sell the permits as well, same price, $250.
So, maybe just a benchmark, just, you know, just benchmark, just see what everybody else is charging, because why should we be giving our parking rate, right?
Right. That would entail a proposal has to be drawn up, and I can do that. That's not a problem, but that's more hours. You know, it's not like, I don't have a problem doing that, but my job is elections, land records, vital records, licensing. I mean, there's a lot to my job. So, and that's why I ask that you keep it, you know, just reflective of what the job entails, and that's why I ask for a small increase. Okay?
So, I appreciate the fact that because this is new and you jumped in on it and getting on to it, is that something you think you will continue to be responsible for, or at some point, once you feel that you have it pretty much organized and in control, would be something a member of your?
I'm a control freak, and we get the phone calls. So, if I were to say, okay, I got a call, there's a breakdown, and I got to call another department and hopefully get somebody out there to do what they have to do or get on the phone, I'm kind of out of the loop there. So, I have people calling me for the parking. Our number's down there on the sign. If you have any issues, we sell the annual permits. So, it's kind of makes sense that I would take that on at that point. It was public works at the time, but it was, it was falling behind. The lot was done, and the kiosk was not up and running, and.
If I could, I could address that. The permits have always gone through the town clerk's office, so the annual permits and the daily permits. So, this makes sense to keep it there. What the new responsibility is, is this new electronic system, which has a benefit in that we're getting a lot more revenue because the old meters used to break down a lot. But that does put some load on, on her.
I actually went down and changed the coin box myself. Got the guy down from Massachusetts and took a video of how exactly to do it because it wasn't working. So, yeah, but I went down with Greg from Building Maintenance, and he's got keys and he helps. So, it works. I mean, it works right now, so.
I was just projecting on the future. You know, you're a high, high knowledge worker, and this seems like after a period of time, it's going to become more maintenance and mundane rather than, you know, problem, getting problems referring to things.
It actually.
Probably not something that in three or five years, you're going to have to address at the same level that you do today.
It was actually really difficult in the beginning. I was spending a lot of time on it. And then, once the kinks got out and we got set and programmed and, you know, we didn't get a phone call at all. It's solar-based, solar-operated machine, so when it's snow or rain, I do get phone calls. It does timeout, so it's, you know, there is time, but it's not overwhelming responsibility. I don't mind doing it. I like having my hands in it because then I can give people the, you know, and I can issue refunds if they're overcharged. I can actually go in and refund their credit card on that, that system. So, I went over my seven. Sorry. Any other questions? That's it? I'll look into that daily and.
I mean, just even, I think what you're saying is the proposal would be for the rail, right?
Yeah, I'd have to present it and get approved.
But if you just looked at the other tabs and said, you know, we're where we should be, well, then there's no more work to do, right?
It hasn't been increased in a long time. So, yeah, I thought about it this year, but with all the changes down there, I figured I didn't want to double whammy them. You know, they're using a new kiosk, which was, you know, problematic in the beginning.
Yeah.
And then to raise the fees, we're getting a lot of people from Danbury, though, in different towns, so.
And it might just be more than a lot to see.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a question for Bob. Can we charge part of, with the services to that account?
You mean like snowplow and things like that?
Yeah.
We have a separate company that does the snowplow down there.
Yeah, but I meant for her extra services.
Hmm?
For her extra services.
The extra responsibility.
And we do do it with the enterprise funds and the.
And Bob, yeah, Bob Rich.
Maybe it's something we should look into.
I would just want to check with the, you know, the agreement that we have with the state to make sure that we could do something like that, but, you know.
Bob Rich is, he's compensated out of that account, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. We're good?
Thank you.
If you have any questions, you can reach out to me. I'll be happy to provide you with more information. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Number 14, Assessor.
Next.
Can we, so the presenters may not know that we're working solely on digital files, and so as you guys are talking, if you could just tell us, like, you know, like, for example, like, the revenue comparison chart, like, which chart should we go into? And then it takes a minute to get into, just so you know. So, we're not following immediately along since this is going on.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Izzy. I'm the Assessor in the town. I pretty much have, this is my second year, so hopefully I'll be okay with this. My little dog is six, so of course, seeing the puppy is making me, but that's okay. So, I did attach a narrative, and the narrative's there for anybody feels like reading it. It gives us a little bit more in-depth understanding of what the Assessor's Office does. We really are responsible for all of the real estate, personal property, and motor vehicles, anything that's taxable or non-taxable on the grant list. We didn't have, we've had a big change because, of course, last year I went into, to become the Assessor. We have two new people. So, those two people are taking courses and have, are really eager and doing fantastic. Nora came from the Health Department, so she's totally learning. It's all new to her, so it takes a little extra time. So, the courses are very beneficial to her, and that's why you'll see a little increase in my education. Dana came from Brookfield, and she has now taken about, she's taken four of the course, five of the courses so far, so she can hopefully take one of her exams. There is also, I had also put extra money because I wanted to join the Fairfield County Realtors Association. That will also give me information because we're always trying to search and find real estate and changes, finished basement, extra bathrooms, remodeled work. That will help me and be beneficial, and it's really kind of inexpensive. I think it was $250 to join that. So, I don't think that's a bad price to be an associate and be able to get that information. It also helps when people come to the Board of Assessment Appeals, because if anything's sold or bought, we can look those things up and see if any changes were done. The other thing is the office expenses that had increased slightly, and that really is solely due to the postage has increased and that we have control over that, might not force us to a stamp. So, that is where some, you know, my changes have been. Tyler Technologies went from $10,000, oh my gosh, my eyes are getting bad, 800 to, I mean, what did I say? $10,000. Thank you very much. I think I need stronger glasses on. So, but that's a contract, so we have no change with that, and we really are, it's been a great program. It's online. It's easy for people to navigate on it versus the old system, so I do think that's a beneficial thing.
So, is that just their software?
The software.
For this year? Because they also did the assessments last year, which was an additional charge on top.
Correct.
But this is just a yearly software charge?
This is the software charge. Some of it does go into my, into the IT, and like, that paper is an attachment on there, and that will show, I have it here, I dropped my paper, so I'm not a holder, where some of the costs are on the IT part of it for them. We also have the $10,000, which I said is for audits. That's very important because as of last year, I just gave a little, I did a quick summary just to see how much we increased that, and from that $10,000 audits, I gained $26,000, I guess it, dear bear with me, $26,137 increase in taxes. So, that's not bad for.
So, moving that line up by $1,000 from nine to 10, netted $26,000 in additional revenue.
In revenue.
That's good.
So, and then we have the appeals that we're, I mean, the audits that we're doing this year. So, we have, I've already picked out 10 different companies, and we're going to do those audits this year. So, that hasn't increased. That money stayed the same. Sometimes we can make more or less depending on how accurately are they filing their, you know, their, their personal property. And that's all on the business personal property. Courses, we're always taking education courses. I also need to be in different committees, and that's important because of legislation. Legislation is always changing. The state will cut back programs, and of course, those burdens fall on the Assessor's Office to run those programs. So, it's very important that everybody's educated for that reason. I think that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
I'll ask my annual question. Your fees, are they current or can we raise them?
There's no fees that we could raise.
No fees.
We did see an increase of about approximately 1.5% from last year's grant list to this year's grant list, so that's really fabulous. You do see tolls got still at the summit. They have construction going up there. We have Maple Avenue, those homes that are Toll Brothers. The Magellan Building, that sold recently, the one on Grassy Plain Street. Commercial is, you're seeing, you know, they've got the brewery. We have different, Carlucci's just did that remodeling of theirs. Those are all beneficial things, and that's helped our, increase our grant list.
Izzy, do you charge for copies?
50 cents a page.
That's the only.
That's really the only thing.
That's the only fee that you would get, and that's your standard fee.
And I find if it's somebody's person, card, if it's a real estate card, I don't charge them. I think, you know, they're paying their taxes. I'll give them, you know, a real estate card. I don't charge for those. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you, Izzy.
Thank you very much.
Tax Collector, 150.
Good evening, everybody. For those who don't know me, I'm SCACO Tax Collector. I hope I'll be brief. I only had a few increases in my budget. The biggest was, well, the largest was in my education, but if you look at the dollar amount, 10% increase really was only $300. I really want to point out, in 10 years, I've only increased the education budget twice. Once, five years ago, for about $120, and then five years prior, 10 years ago, $20. Part of that is because the Tax Collectors Association recognized that towns were having difficulties and tax collectors were having difficulties getting their education certifications. So, they supplemented a lot of coursework. They no longer have funds to do that. So, almost every educational class that I go to has increased. Not a great deal, but it is an increase, $360 for that. The rest of it, under general office expenses, the majority of that 4% is postage. Postage went up by 10%. Bulk mailing postage last year, which is what we use the most, went up 2% last year, which I did not include in our, my budget last year because we were trying to keep things pretty stable. But this year, with the two increases on top of it, I felt that I have to increase a bit. I'm not even sure 4% is enough or if it's too much, to be honest with you, because I, I don't have a complete breakdown of the, what we send out, just first-class mail straight without the bulk mailing. Bulk mailing I have, but not the first-class mail. And that's it. That was really the majority of what I have. As Izzy said, I would like to express that our education is extremely important, especially in, in my office. We are subject to lawsuit, bankruptcies if we don't treat them the right way, if we don't file the proper paperwork. We're always subject. So, the same thing with our tax sales. So, it's definitely important, not just myself, but my staff is educated. We don't want to tell someone the wrong thing or do the wrong thing. That's really it. I don't have much.
Does anybody ever ask for electronic bills? Can you do electronic bills legally?
We do do electronic bills. We already do it. We have paperless billing right now. Last year, I had 256 people signed up. This year, I have 352. The process to sign up online, it's free to the town because of the service that I'm using that handles our credit cards. The problem is, is they want you to use a credit card. So, it looks like you're paying your bill, and you have to go through the whole process. Never put in a credit, credit card, but people get nervous that they're paying with a credit card and they don't want to pay with a credit card. So, I'm trying to come to an agreement. It's a little hard because they provide this service. It's free. Doesn't cost the town a penny. And their goal is to have people use the credit card so that they get their fee. My goal is to not be able to have to send a bill to be able to have people do it paperless. We're working on it with them, you know. I've expressed, I, my thing is, is if you get people online and you get them the email that says, pay your bill, they're most likely going to click that link, and you're going to actually get more people pay online than you do. We do have a tremendous amount of people who pay online, but they don't all sign up for the paperless billing.
I was just thinking, you know, if we get rid of some of the postage by doing that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It's always the goal. Always the goal.
Because it's only going to keep going up over the years.
Absolutely.
But do we lose a percentage of the credit card company?
No. Nope. It's all paid for by the taxpayer. I can't charge for a credit card fee.
There's a surcharge, right, to the taxpayer?
There is a surcharge. It's, depends on what method they use. If they use a credit card or a debit card, it's 2.95%, which is pretty low. If they use, straight from their checking account and ACH payment, it's 95 cents. So, there's options out there for you.
And do you have any idea what kind of savings you would find if, say, 1,000 taxpayers switched to an electronic system so you didn't have to, it's not only postage, it's the mailing costs and, you know, paper production and all that?
Well.
Any, any feel for what that cost savings could be?
I mean, 1,000 is not a lot in the scheme of things. I mean, I sent out in July over 25,000 bills, and it cost me probably, it's about $25,000 to do that. The majority of, because what you don't see in my budget is some of the costs that are incurred by the tax office are in the IT budget. The printing of the bills, this, the software company, that stuff's in the IT budget. What I have here is envelopes, some forms, things like that.
I mean, I see, but that's because you're never going to get, get from all the way across, and it's going to be, it would ever be a transition. And so, some of the printing cost and handling cost you're going to have, even though it's less 1,000 or less 5,000.
Right, right.
You're still going to have that, you know, production cost and.
Yeah, I don't really have, I can't, I've never figured it.
You can't, you can't.
Yeah.
Don't censor that.
I mean, I would say you'd save some money, of course, absolutely, which is why our goal is always to try and get people to use the online billing and to at least use the paperless billing. One, it's a reminder for them, you know. I don't have to remind people more than, they get automatic reminders. If you've ever used the online billing, you, you're going to get a reminder for each quarter. You're going to get a reminder when you're late. So, for me, it's a benefit if they will sign up for it. I am working with them right now. I'm working with a marketing person on their end to do some promotional work in the office. But it's one of those things that while you're busy collecting, you don't always get to it. And you get to it and then you have to turn away from it because we're collecting again, you know. So it, it's a start and stop kind of thing and hopefully we can get that complete.
Do we have an email list for taxpayers? Do we have emails for taxpayers?
We have emails, yeah.
So would it be possible, if you found that it would save a significant amount of money, to just send out a blast email that says, "First, how you sign up for?"
Currently, I can't do that. Currently, you have to sign up to the online billing to acknowledge that you want your bill that way. I can't just email bills to people.
Oh, no, 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 no. My point was, could you send them a note that says, "If you'd like to sign up for online billing, here's the link to do it."
Well, they'd have to have used the online billing for me to get that. People don't just give us our, their email, yeah.
Oh, so the only way you got emails is if they use the online.
So the only emails you have are people who already signed up?
Correct. Or people who have, we do have a select list of people that have come to us and said, like, "I'm out of the country." We've got one guy who's in the Philippines and somebody in the Netherlands. And, you know, they personally asked us to email their bill. We still paper mail their bill, but we also email it to them. We have a small list, yeah.
And let me just ask you one question. I know I can't ask you for fees. You don't have fees. You just collect money.
Actually, I do have fees. That's true. I do.
Tell me.
But it's not something that I can raise. I have motor vehicle fees. And this, it's in my narrative. This year we collected $16,670. And this past year, and that works to offset some of the costs for the motor vehicle report.
My, my, my question was, what, what is your collection rate? I know it's very, very high.
This year here was actually a, a record for me. It was 99.37, which is the highest that I've been.
Well, congratulations on that. Excellent job.
This past year, it was the highest.
And I'm sorry, for which year?
They, this, for the fiscal year that just ended, June 30th, correct. Although I do think that the auditors look a couple of months out. I don't know, is that correct? Barry always used to tell me that.
They go a couple, yeah.
They go a couple of months out. So they would probably maybe even have a little higher than the 99.37. But on June 30th, that's where we were.
What would we budget that, so we're going to do like 98 points something like that?
98.7.
98.7.
And I've begged him not to raise that. Because you, you never, you know...
I mean, you could run the risk of, you know, the economy flopping and all of a sudden...
But all, all the access just goes into the general fund or you used to make out back whatever it is.
Correct. But then the other part of it, sometimes we, we figure on a certain amount of back taxes that are going to be collected, well, Anne is collecting 93%. Then the amount for the back tax is going to come down too. So it, it becomes, you know, almost, not a wash, but, you know, it works its way out.
Yeah. The, the more I collect upfront, the less we collect on back taxes. So, you know, you don't have, less interest as well, yeah.
And what's a more typical collection rate? If 99.37 is the high water mark, what's typical?
I mean, I think you see some of the cities at 97, 98, you know, because they, they have a real moving population. We don't have a big, as big of a moving popul- population.
So what would it be for Buffalo?
Well, where we are, 99.37. It's, I would say over the past, gosh, I've been, I don't even remember how long I've been tax collector. But I, I think there's only been maybe two or three years that I didn't hit 99.
And what years were those?
I don't recall. Oh, probably, I, I shouldn't say, I don't recall. I was going to say 2007, probably 2008 during the recession.
What was the collection rate then?
Probably about 98.8, maybe 98.9.
Wasn't that the year that, six months into the year Barry realized there was a problem and they backed off on, the Board of Ed backed off on the spending?
Yes. We had a spending freeze, the town, yeah, we had to freeze. Because it, it, I started to get to the second quarter, probably around January, and realized that we were not even coming close to hitting our marks at all.
So half a percentage more between high water mark and low water mark.
Yeah, but at that point there, at that point in the year when we stopped everything, it was very low. I mean, scary low. Yeah. It picked up, but it was definitely, you know, the Board of Ed gave back, the town gave back. You know, there was a lot that didn't get spent that year because we weren't sure we were going to have the money.
It's just, it's really good data, Mike, because it's going to help us figure what we can do in some other areas. Whether it's the basis points of, of address, have another data point for thinking about the fund balance.
I mean, when you think in the whole scheme of things, you know, when I look at what I have left on the books at the end of the year, you know, out of 70 million or 68 million that I'm charged with collecting, I mean, if I have half a million dollars left, it's not really a lot left. We've collected pretty much everything. Any other questions?
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you. Certainly I'm available for any questions if anybody wants to have a phone chat with me.
Megan North Cassadian, for those of you who don't know me, I'm a social worker in town. For those who didn't get to see me last year, I'm just as nervous. I'm a nervous wreck, so please bear with me. I tried and I just can't get my nerves out.
That promise should be really nice.
My mind though goes blank when I'm nervous, so just bear with me. If I talk too fast, please stop me.
You're fine.
So overall, my budget is decreased by $1,205. I am requesting for salary for the, an assistant. I am requesting an additional, an increase of $1,475 to get additional assistance. The busiest time of the year surprisingly is tied with the holidays. It's also between July 31st and Au- July 1st and August 31st. I use about a third of my budget for the assistant hours because we qualified almost 200 households for the food pantry and Brotherhood in Action baskets. At that time too, we're, are doing the back-to-school programs. And that, that does take a lot of time. We tried to make it a little easier for the seniors this year. We went to Reynolds Ridge and went somewhere else, but my mind's not thinking. So we went there, oh, to the food pantry. We went to the food pantry twice in July. July 1st is when the state updates the records. So we went there to make it as easy as possible for anybody that wanted to use, utilize the resources again. As far as office, oh, and I guess I should just give you a little blurb. For the holidays, we did the holiday gift giving program. We did service 111 children we adopted out. The community was so supportive. There was over $8,220 that were donated. The program was fully funded on, on donations this year, so I'm excited about that. For back-to-school, we, we provided 103, I think it is, children with backpacks.
How much?
103.
Backpacks?
Yeah, backpacks, back-to-school supplies. I did a first annual party, which was a hit with the children. 90% of the children invited, participated in it. We had, I got some hairdressers to do free haircuts and we had the police and the fireman and we did raffles and it was so much fun for the kids. It wasn't about coming to social work for my backpack, it was a party, so they didn't even have any idea.
Was that an increase over the previous year?
That was, that was, it was 120 before I started last year. I would, I think it was about 100. So it's just a, just a little bit of an increase for the back-to-school. The, and, and same, it's, it's about the same. I have new people, but some people have left town or, or, you know, are out of the age to receive that. So if anything, it went up maybe about three to 10 people. But the food pantry is really what's going up. Almost 200 households, the pantry, you know, the community food pantry is, you know, struggling a little bit. We're getting the word out to also help them get donations in so that they could continue to meet the needs. They're worried that they would have to decrease it from twice a month to one time a month. We have a, a lot of people utilizing the pantry. And I try to tell everybody that I meet with about all different resources that are available to them to help, help them. More seniors are, are definitely...
Is it more seniors, you said?
More seniors, yeah. But there are a lot of, I did have the breakdown because I gave it to the food pantry. I should have, I should have brought that. But the biggest number that are being served are, are children, households with children. But we're trying to get more of the seniors too, to, to become familiar with it. And then they do the Brotherhood in Action delivers all volunteers baskets four times a year. So we're, they said that we can do, they, they were only doing for the summer program, the households with children because so many children utilize the half-price or free meals. So they said that we were, will be able to do everybody this summer. Who doesn't want a hot dog and hamburger? Right, everybody. So that is that. I did also add an Easter basket program and I'm working closely with the community businesses because there's so many needs and there's so many generous people in Buffalo that I feel, what better way to meet the needs of the people that need things with our local businesses? So I'm encouraging, you know, any business to, they don't have to do anything except for have a little display in their store and people that want to donate instead of going to the mall can buy something from their store. So I had a lot of success with that. The, the families are loving. Another thing I did last year was Blair and Ellie and I got to like be the Easter bunny because we had so many things. I went over to Reynolds Ridge and gave up to all the seniors that were on the food pantry list, gift certificates for Blair and Ellie's. It was like they hit the lottery. So office expenses, I am requesting an increase of, I have a typo. It's not $2,200, it's $220 that I'm requesting. I am bringing educational programs to social services. And some of the things that we had this past year since July were sleep health, pet safety, coping with grief during the holidays and that was really successful. I am going to start with, not myself, but hospice is going to be facilitating a bereavement group here soon. So I just want to be able to really enhance the quality of the programs. That's mostly what that increase is for. For the Buffalo Emergency Fund, I am decreasing that, I'm requesting to decrease that by $3,250. I'm, I'm finding that, of course, I don't know everything. I didn't go to, come to my interview thinking that I knew everything, but I really am learning even more and more resources that are out there. One of the biggest items that the Buffalo Emergency Fund was used for was heating expense. And I did, this year I found an emergency benefit for people through the Community Action Agency. So that, I think is $892 that has been used so far from that. But I'm hoping to not have any, nothing will be used for that for, for energy assistance going forward. For non-governmental organizations, we're requesting the same amount of $20,000. For eviction, I guess I should say for Jews in education, sorry. I am requesting $400, which is a $100 decrease. I did attend three seminars this year. Four, three of them were free and one was at cost. And then a second one I'm going to was at cost, but I, I could definitely reduce it to 400. And the mileage expense too, I'm, I'm reducing that request to 200, reducing it by $50 because we carpool here. Eviction storage, it made me nervous last year. It makes me nervous again this year. I am requesting an additional $500 to the amount of $2,250 for that. The eviction prices, the evictions are increasing. We had seven evictions this fiscal year that required storage units.
Seventy, did you say?
Seven.
Oh, seven.
Yeah, which was enough. So for, I think everybody knows, I think we talked about it last year, but the town and cities are responsible for when somebody's evicted either through the bank or landlord. We are responsible for paying for the storage for up to 15 days. If the person whose belongings are being stored, they don't request their items back and pay for that storage unit for those 15 days, then the town is responsible to toss out those items. I've worked hard. Liz has helped me too with working with Savers and Goodwill and Off the Streets, which is a great program. They have been taking any usable items, but it's still a lot of stuff that people lose in the eviction process. So I am requesting more, but however, I did talk to Mr. Nickerbacher and did recently write to the legislators because I think that process should change. I think the towns and cities should be eliminated from the eviction process altogether. We have a landlord, we have a bank. They're the ones that are giving the mortgage, renting their home out. So I feel like it should be soup to nuts, their responsibility to, yeah.
So it's governed by state statute that the town's responsible. The liability of the town though, is it pretty great if someone says, you know, "We weren't given notice." It's, you know, I mean, I buy a lot of foreclosures and I'm always very careful about the problem. Like I try and get touch with people and say, "Do you want your stuff back?" Because I don't want them coming back to me saying, you know, "You threw away my grandmother's heirloom." So by state statute, we have to do this.
Right.
Is there ever a dispute about, "Hey, I wasn't given notice of the town you threw away $20,000"? Like, is there like a, a catalog that goes on or is the sheriff's handling all this?
Yeah, the marshal does. The marshal serves the paper. On that paper, it says where the items, what storage unit, we, we use Buffalo Storage, it's right here. What storage unit those items are going to and my contact is on that so that...
And who has to do it, public works or like who transfers?
Yeah, the highway department does. I brought things to Savers and Goodwill, Off the Streets came to the units to get things out. Most of the time, the people don't want things. Most of the time, I'm involved with them already, so I know who they are. But it's not, the marshals won't always give me their contact if I don't know them. So I like to re-educate them on the process to give them another chance, which is a whole nother issue too, why I want it to be changed because it is a conflict of interest. I'm your social worker, here's your presents for Christmas. Sorry, now they're all going to be tossed away, you know. It's, it's sad and that has happened. So, so many reasons. Plus, the workers, the highway department, that, these items are heavy. It's not like feathers and, and bags, it's like heavy items. So there are chances of, there are risks for getting hurt and injured while they're moving that stuff. It's, it's high. So we'll, we'll see. I've never like fought for something before, so we'll see what happens.
What's the policy if we just tell the bank it's your responsibility or not?
Well, Mr. Nickerbacher educated me on the, it's gone back to the Great Depression when this law went into effect.
Part of, part of it is a federal law, actually. But it's town responsibility. It's, uh, it's in the statutes at the state, federal level, we have to pick up the cost. It used to be, we had to, we had one marshal a few years ago who refused to touch it. Because typically the marshals will actually take the material and put it in the storage unit. But we had one who just called some set date, "It's on the curb, come get it." Or you get fined, I think. I think, I think there's a fine attached to it if the town doesn't respond. But then if the individual does not come and buy or, you know, pay, pay the storage fee, then we have to dispose of it. It has to go to the transfer station. We have to pay the tip fee to get rid of it.
Yes, right.
And those costs are not even included.
No.
That's all hidden.
Yeah, the cost just to, to throw out the items. And, and you know, it's sad. On top of writing to legislation, I hope that I could make, help make a change in this because I really feel passionate about it. But I did reach out to three companies that do junk removal services. So two of them are, are Buffalo-owned and one is a, you know, I think statewide corporation. So I, I want to try to cut, reduce the costs of that and then the risks of people getting injured and plus the turnover time. If I would, if I did have somebody, the turnover time can be day 16, but day 16 might be snowing and the highway department can't just drop the snow to clear out the unit. And the storage unit will work with me on two-week periods. So that's going forward, what I'm going to do is just set the date for day 16 to have it ho- cleared out. And I'm hoping I'll be able to work with some of these companies. But it depends on how many evictions do take place and I just anticipate it's just going to keep going up. I had three in one week and then it stops around Thanksgiving because they don't do evictions between like Thanksgiving and the holidays. But then I had three more. Luckily, those three for last week and nobody left anything behind.
So you had seven last year, is that what you were budgeting?
Seven, I had seven just since July. It depends on the unit. We had a house, a bank eviction and it was a big house, like 3,000 square foot house. And it took up a 40 by eight unit and that's $240 for one month.
But these are, evictions are when the people are forced out. It's not just a foreclosure where people... So there's actually many more foreclosures in town than seven in a year. This is just when the people refuse to leave. A sheriff shows up and says, "You're out."
It could be a radical foreclosure.
It could be a radical, but... It could be a rental, but I just don't want us thinking that there's only seven foreclosures because there's a lot more than that that happens.
These are evictions.
Yeah, these are evictions by bank or by landlord, but also those are the only seven that required storage. I've been served, our Dion has been served probably 20 since July, 20 papers. And if I know them, I try to work with them. We did, we were able to get one gentleman to put the storage right in his name. I'm like, "You're gonna pay for it anyway." You know, if you wanna have access to it right away without waiting for me, because he wanted to do it on a Saturday, but that wasn't gonna happen. So, you know, we can work with them, I, I like to, but it's just overall, it's, you know, an issue and that's the last thing I think taxpayers would wanna pay for is storage for, yeah.
I'm getting the sense that you feel like evictions are going up for some reason.
Yeah, I mean, I've only been in my position a year and five months, but they definitely have been since I started. I mean, I was on the coattail of the fiscal year last year, but...
And so, what's your, because you know most of these folks, right? Like, what's your sense of what's going on?
I know probably a majority of them. People are just, you know, struggling, they're, they're struggling overall. I mean, some of them have had multiple evictions and, you know, moved different places, so I can't really pinpoint what's happening. It's mostly young people renting, but then some whole families in houses that own the house.
And people who are employed and not able to make ends meet or losing their jobs or what's the, for example?
I'm trying to think of the specific people that I worked with. We did, we had, we have a gal that recently was evicted. She's divorced, she has a child, she's utilized all the programs and, you know, she lost her condo, she owned the condo and lost it to the bank and was evicted. She worked, she has a job, but just couldn't pay the mortgage and it's such a long process. So, when some, these, you know, when they, by the time they reach out for services, they may have or even, even have already started that eviction process, you know? So, I really do try, I may, I don't try, I do, when I meet anybody, even if it's on the phone and they have a question about energy assistance, I really encourage them to come in and meet with me to see what other resources are available. I've had, the Career Center unfortunately, the Goodwill Career Center closed in Brookfield, but we had the gentleman who ran it, he came twice to help people with networking and a separate time doing resumes. But, so, you know, I try to help people in any way I can, but that's just something.
It'd be, it'd be interesting to know, get a little bit behind it. Megan, the town clerk mentioned to us that foreclosures and bankruptcies will weigh down because that's...
I know.
Right, that suggests a pretty healthy economy, macro data, micro data, but it seems like you're seeing evictions of renters primarily, is that kind of...
Primarily renters, but we have, we, in, in this fiscal year, we had one, two, a gentleman that owned a house and then a house in a beautiful neighborhood and, and the whole house is in the storage unit. So, there, there are people that are homeowners too.
And foreclosures, there still may be many more that are foreclosure yet. So, you know, the average foreclosure could take two to three years. Some others' kids involved, it could be even longer than that if people aren't known. So, you know, whether we know it's just foreclosures, we could have a lot more homes. I mean, you could go on Realty Track right now and I'll tell you how many homes in the town of Bethel are under list pending right now. Just trying to weave it all together, right? Because we also heard from the tax collector that the collection rate is as high as that at 99.37, so it's, I'm just...
Well, foreclosures, the banks are paying the taxes.
I was gonna say.
Banks take over.
They don't pay the taxes until they foreclose.
In the, in the beginning of the process, they start paying the taxes, because I remember asking that, like, I think I talked to Ann because I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, they must be delinquent on this."
The, the banks during a foreclosure will pay the taxes because they have vested interest in the property. And I, I mean, I hate to say I have a little bit of a reputation right now, but we go pretty quick to tax sale, not pretty quick, let's just say we consistently have them. And when you do something on a consistent basis and they know that, they look and say, "This tax collector's gonna have a tax sale." If you don't have a tax sale for 20 years, they're not concerned, they're gonna just sit on the money, but if they, they know. So, the banks normally pay, so even if they're in foreclosure, they'll pay. But, the bankruptcy, I will disagree with Lisa on that, I see more of them than she does. Their bankruptcies are on, on the rise.
And there was one gentleman, he had two, he was, he lost his house, moved into an apartment, he was two evictions within months and then he lost his apartment because he was, he, he couldn't pay for his rent. It's very sad, it's, you know, I was shocked to see that there are so many evictions, you know? And the marshals, I've gotta say, they do a really good job, they really try so hard to encourage people to move their stuff along before it even gets to a point because they, they pack it nice, but you know, everything is stuck in the storage and they pack it from floor to ceiling. So, even if there's one thing that you wanted, you're probably not gonna find it unless you take everything out. Is that, did I finish?
Megan, I adore you. Best thing that's happened in a long time, let me tell you.
Absolutely.
Because you are, you think so in depth about what you're doing, you're so willing to learn and you're familiarizing yourself with all the outside resources rather than just saying, "Oh, well, I'll just ask for more in the budget." I have to say, I, I'm a little bit staggered because it's so, to me, it's so unusual. Of all the departments that could come in with the big sob story and say, "You don't do that because you're working with people in the community to make that happen." And, and I just congratulate you.
Thank you.
Honestly, this is exactly, what you wrote here is exactly the way it should be for every department. This is what it should be, where I did this, I did that, I did, you know, brought the costs down and I, I don't even know what to say, I'm so taken aback by it. I mean, it's great.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I appreciate everyone's time too and dedicating your, your evening to listening to our proposals. I'll still be nervous next year. Thank you.
Jeff, you are planning area?
I'm Beth Kavagnum, the Director of Planning for the Planning and Zoning Department, L250. And I'll just keep it really short. I gave you a pretty good description as far as what the duties of the department are. One thing that our main focus, I believe, is we're the first stop. Somebody comes into town, they're thinking about doing a business in town, thinking about doing any type of development in town, I'm the one that they see first when they walk in the door. Janice, the EDC Director is a great asset that we have here in town, she's a part-time employee. I find that she, I would love to see her work full-time. I know it's not my department, it's someone else's, but she is a great asset. Sometimes it's very difficult as the planning director to encourage people to come into town, but at the same time, you are gonna be the one responsible for reviewing whatever type of application they come in or development that they wanna propose. And it's a very tricky balance to do on a full-time basis. But anyways, in our budget itself, you will see that we, in this year, we've increased our revenue about $20,000. I also, I look at Paul on this because I wanna stop as many questions as I can before they even start. The other thing, just to give you an idea, for example, I did look at our fees in regards to our fees and the, the easiest way is to give you a visual. Greenwood Avenue is where Bethel Food Market is, recently was approval for an 18,000 square foot building on the corner of the property. It's a two-story building, it's gonna be located, it's gonna contain totally commercial uses. The application fee associated with that was $4,000 plus an extra $6,000 for architectural reviews and incidentals. So, before they even put a shovel in the ground or received an approval by the Planning and Zoning Commissioner to various land use boards, they already invested $10,000 as fees. Another example of that is over at the Industrial Park. We're in the process now, there's a 16,000 square foot building that's being constructed. I went and looked at his fees and his fees were approximately around $6,500. I think that's comparable to other towns in the review process. Now, that is just for an application to my department. It doesn't include building fees, it doesn't include sewer and water book up fees and all those other fees that are associated with construction. As far as the department fees, I haven't put in any proposals to raise any of the office expenses and things of that nature. Several years ago, you asked me to, you were looking into how much money we spent on engineering costs. And so, what we did was we took $10,000 from the general account for construction engineering and associated that with my department. And the reason for that was, an example would be if a builder has a piece of property, he wants to build a single-family home, there's an engineering fee associated with that, a cost to review, to make sure drainage is installed properly, septic systems, wells, not septic, excuse me Laura, drainage, things that associated with general construction. Usually on a building, a single-family home, a construction review for engineering is approximately between $1,500 and $2,000. If it's more detailed, there was an 18-unit 830-g structure on Taylor Avenue that was constructed this year. It went through the Planning and Zoning Commission process, but after that, there were some issues with the construction involved with that project. So, the department review involving that was close to $4,000. And I think, you know, if you, if you, I'd rather take questions than want, oh Cynthia, just one thing. With the Land Use Commission accounts, I forget what account that is, legal notice fees, it is still to this day that we have to use the news times and Hill Town Council tells me that I can use another resource for publication, I, I still have to, those accounts will not change. There's no, no request for increase in any of the Land Use Commission accounts, but unfortunately I can't make any changes.
I'm gonna get away without me saying the P-word, the penny saver.
It is in front of the Charter Commission, so.
Love it.
Working food system.
Really, your only two increases was salary, which I'm assuming most of that's contractual.
Yes, except for...
Contracted services, you spent an actual of almost $30,000 in 2018.
Except for the car?
Seems a little high. Right now, we're at $10,200 for seven months into the year.
It says here 28.5 was actual for 2018. Yeah, but at 28.58.
That's what it's picking up for, yeah.
So... Then there's some errors in that.
I mean, you think, so $15,000 likely will cover, you think, what your contractor's supposed to be, all right, so the 28 is maybe just a mispunctuation or something like that.
It might be miscoded, but I...
I think it's miscoded.
Sometimes, you know, OpenGov is drawing the information from units. I mean, we's, we've had some problems with some of the other categories, you know, columns, so we'll go back and check that out.
Okay. But I've been watching that account very carefully. We did that little bit of an increase after the first year.
So, you're asking, well, you're, you're projecting a $5,000 increase in contracted services for engineering, but you've actually already brought more revenue associated with that from fees, correct?
About 20 grand.
Yeah, okay, so that's...
And we have a lot going on too. We do have a lot coming in. You know, I don't know what, what you all may be interested in, but if you have any questions with that, I'd be more happy to answer.
Beth, if a contractor triggers a review and it's based on an error on their part, they're not sticking with the plans, they're not doing something, is that something where they have to pay the engineer review or does the town have to pay for it?
The town has to pay for it. Because it could lead to litigation, so I have to ensure that the town is covered by having our professional engineer review whatever is proposed by the other old engineer.
Pat, on that subject, would a change in charter help you to divert those costs in that situation back to the builder?
I don't, I don't think so. Because, because what Beth is saying is the town has to hire its own non-partisan engineer, not, not in the political sense, but representing us to determine if a violation is occurred because if it winds up in court, we can't rely on, on having a person who's, we're suing or suing us using their, their, their work.
I understand, but if it's in our favor, why can't we revert?
You can recover those costs in the court, not here.
Okay.
Yeah, we could rec, there is, there was a change in the law. Where if we do, like say I have to issue a cease and desist on a project because they're just playing cowboy and going full hog or something. There is, they changed the state statutes recently where we can recover those legal fees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura, Health Department, Department 350.
Yep, 350, 350. And I provided you a narrative and I also provided you with some attachments that I hope are more clear than last year. Our town is very busy. So, when you go to the open.gov, we are all learning together, I learned too. Under salaries, I am asking again to reinstate the full-time sanitarian that the Health Department had in the early 2000s that we lost only because of manpower shortage. And I'm also asking for increased hours of contracted technical staff. That's really, and that would be under contracted services. That are, that's the big ticket items of the Health Department. They're, we are very busy and there's a lot of legal mandates that we are required to do and those, Beth staff and I complete that work on your behalf. So, that's why that's there. If you look at maybe the third or fourth chart in the attachments, and it takes a while sometimes for them to open, you could look whenever you want to or I could stop. What you'll see is I provided the area staffing and I put Bethel next to Trumbull and we're almost 20,000 now and Trumbull's 36. But why I did is if you do a market analysis, I'm told that the business activity of Bethel mirrors almost Trumbull. And I will remind you something we talked about last year, we have more, we have about the same rental housing as Trumbull. So, when I talk about the volume of service with you, hoarding has increased in hoarding cases, rental housing complaints and rental housing matters have increased. We usually go, most of public health agencies go as a two-person team. No one goes alone anymore for many, many reasons. And, and, and we're very judicious and efficient with that. So, I did give you an area and I think if you look at that and that you've always done that for, on my behalf, you'll see that Bethel Health Department has a lot less staff than most of the agencies surrounding us.
Can I just ask a question on the salary line?
Yeah.
So, is there still some money left, like is there a part-time sanitarian because...
Oh, there's contracted staff out and about with me.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, is you're asking to reinstate a full-time sanitarian.
Yes, yes. So, there should be like 66 or 64,000 and then I went up to 70,000, oh, three, oh, which might be just a little low. So, Brad, did you wanna interject since you helped me with salaries?
Well, yeah, salaries on my sheet shows an increase of only 22,000.
Correct, because of the contracted staff that are under that account. We have contracted sanitarians that work with me now or we would never...
So, so basically the difference between a contracted and your own full-time person is 22,000 because you get rid of the contracted.
No, we, we, if you look at the area, we have a full-time person, we're asking for reinstated and then we're asking to keep the contracted people that keep me going seven days a week. Very... Very similar to the Police Department.
So, I think what Laura's trying to tell you is that the individual part-time contracted services, they're gonna be down in, in the last line item for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand?
Oh, so that's where it is.
Yeah, for contracted staff. Thank you. With West Nile virus and.
And the ten percent increase this year's salary, that comes from overtime or something?
Well, that, I think, that's, that's, see, for years, she had a budget line for a full-time sanitarian. Couldn't find one to hire. So, a couple of years ago, but she, but she was able to fill in as best she could with part-time work, like, you know, contract work, sanitarians from other towns who are off for a day, and she was just barely getting the work done. In fact, you know, that's, as she said, it's a seven-day-a-week thing in the high season. So, we cut that, she wasn't utilizing that whole budget, so we cut it back, which caused a considerable amount of panic in her department. So what she's asking for, that salary line is going up, is she wants that number to go back up to the full-time area, because there is a position there that's never been filled, because she couldn't find it, but we're, we're gonna, she wants to try to fill that again. Plus, a little bit of an increase in the contracted services line for other, other inspectors that she brings in on a contract basis.
I'm sorry, and again, I'm just slow.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I'm not understanding, the salary increase is twenty, is twenty-two, so twenty-two thousand, Brad, you can.
So, currently in the twenty-nineteen budget, there's a line at under salaries, which got rolled up into five-one-on-one, for sanitarian for fifty-one-five-seven-five. So, the twenty thousand dollars you're seeing in salaries is to take that from fifty to seventy. So that's the ten percent you're seeing in salaries.
Okay.
And contracted, she's also asking to keep contracted sanitarians on top of the full-time person, plus there's an increase in food inspectors, correct?
No, they're just, it just, it should be just, they always were there, so there's the, there's a contracted food inspector. And now we've increased the restaurants we have, and so I'm asking that the contracted food inspector go to a part-time food inspector. So the food inspector works about twenty hours a week, and I'm asking them to go up to twenty-five. And then the contracted staff, they come in, they go out on the norovirus outbreak, help with the pool inspections in the summer, the nail salons, double-team for rental housing.
So, with, with the sanitarian that you're proposing?
Yeah.
They would be a Bethel town employee?
Yes.
And then under contracted services?
These are the hourly people who call in.
You guys just bring in part-time, okay.
Not just, they keep us moving, so if you, and if you look under the attachments, thanks Matt, not really, we are very busy, and I would think what Lisa was talking about is the good thing is that we're a very popular town, and we're very dynamic and we're very busy. So we've added restaurants, we've added a whole bunch of group population businesses that have things to do with public health. The ten condominium pools to get inspected, to talk about new things. We're gonna have a new nail salon form, and we're gonna do a new nail salon inspection form for making sure that there's no infections or any infectious disease through the nail salon work as required by law, and so another attachment.
Could I ask you something about sanitarians?
Yeah, yeah.
So, when that person becomes an employee of Bethel, will they get benefits? And is the whole thing for being employed?
Most, yes, they did in the past, and they would like every other person, yes.
Because I thought Mr. Nickamacher said it'd never been filled, that that.
No.
No, the, the, the budget was there, but it had never been filled by a full-time person.
About, maybe she's saying for like four years. We had a workforce shortage in public health, that I talked about.
So she was filling in with, with contract people on an hourly basis or a daily basis, like a per day?
Our, our, our sanitarian went to Milford.
Okay.
In about twenty-eleven. And then we had a shortage of public health officials. But now, we have more in the market again.
So, increase, what is now, I'm sorry, is eighteen thousand dollars, but there's additional costs, right? With health insurance and potentially all of that. That's the whole, my whole, you know, philosophy of trying not to have people whenever possible. So let me ask you this question. Is, is, is it not possible to, to have contracted services? Because it's gone up, the contracted services have gone up, but I know you said that there's more need for officials, right?
Right, to do the legally mandated work, right.
So, are you saying that it would be more than twenty thousand dollars to keep the sanitarian contracted?
We need a full-time person besides myself. Right now, for about twenty thousand people, the only professional public health person you have with, for the work week is me. So, that's not enough. And so, with that said, they, they perform all the services that a local health department would do during that week. The contracted staff go all over, and so they're, they're bound to other jurisdictions as well. So, no, I could not find a contracted person who wanted to come in thirty-five hours a week like a full-time person. So, the contracted people come and go. Contracted people, they have, like, let's say, one, the food inspector has a commitment for, with Trumbull and with us. And then, or the, what Matt was saying is, that the staff that we have now that are really terrific, they come in on Fridays. So, but when the greater region has been in the midst of a norovirus outbreak, that staff got called out, because their primary place you're always gonna go to first. And so, when the contracted staff get called out to their primary place, the place they do eight hours a week is gonna wait for them to come back to them. So, that's what happens when you're like a seven, you know, day-a-week kind of show. The Health Department, we talked about it last year, is more like the Police Department than any other office in this town building.
Is the sanitarian now, as it said, increased to full-time? Is there a part-time sanitarian right now?
Well, the, no.
No.
Okay. So that's all coming out of contracted services right now?
Well, we, mixed, we have mixed. We're paying professional staff to keep legal and do all the inspections that we do as a town and always have.
Can I try, because I'm maybe sharing some of the same ones. In, in this budget, well, excuse me, in last year's budget, there was a hundred and ninety-three thousand, which included fifty thousand dollars for a sanitarian person that was never hired.
Are you in, were you in the sanitarian account at that time, Bob?
Down, just looking at the salary for the.
Yes, the, the, the public health officials that come in, come in under that account, some of them? And come under the three-one-three contracted services account, some of them?
Okay, I'm looking at the one-zero-one salary.
Yeah.
Where, I'm assuming that's where full-time employees, their salary would go. And in there is an amount, and Brad, you were hitting on that, fifty thousand in there?
Fifty-one-five.
Fifty-one-five.
Five-seventy-five.
But that was never really used for a full-time position, or a part-time position.
Yes.
But now what you're saying is, you want, you like to, your, your recommendation is to add on top of the fifty-one-five, another twenty-one, twenty-two, to make that position full-time.
Right, that was a full-time position about sixty-six thousand in twenty-ten. Still, yeah, and then it got decreased when we lost the full-time person to fifty.
And just focusing on that, presumably, there was a fifty-one thousand dollar, I'll just use the word savings, because we didn't spend it last year in that line.
Correct, oh, you always got it back.
We were using for different services that she needed in the department.
Well, that's why now I'm going to contractors.
Yes, go ahead, you're, you're with me.
I figured it out, thanks to Brad.
All right, cool, thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Brad, for the clarification.
Thank you.
On top, in addition, there's a recommendation for more contracted services.
Well, there actually, yes, there's contracted service, public health officials in there to do public health work in contracted services. The hard-time food inspector.
What is it?
And I have, if you put your icon on the little box under three-one-three or contracted services, as Brad showed me, you will see all the details that are also on the attachments. If you, if you have that block them up, you'll see the part-time food inspector hours and salary. Can you see it?
Not yet, but I'm still, at the highest level.
Oh, all right.
The recommendation is to, it looks like, add roughly forty thousand dollars of contracted services across that whole spectrum of sub-count.
Right, I, I say, right, forgetting the reduction, the forty thousand they took out in, 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 like about twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. I'm trying to get us back to where we were with public health officials working. So what that would lay out to is a one, a full-time sanitarian, a part-time food inspector, which you have a detailed sheet about that, another one attachment. And then you have hours of an inspector that comes, yes. And then you have a ballpark of forty where the inspectors come.
So the full-time increase in twenty-two is really only twenty-two, because there's already existed fifty-one-five.
Correct, and that's, yes, that's what Brad showed.
I can't get that to open.
It doesn't open.
Sister Chairman, sir, can I just, I did myself a little breakdown the other day, just to understand it. So just comparing the nineteen actual budget versus Laura's request, so she's up eighteen, like twenty thousand dollars in salaries, which is a sanitarian going full-time, like we discussed. Biggest other jump in her contracted, so in twenty-nineteen's budget, food inspector and sanitarian were combined, and the budget was thirty-five thousand. And the request this year is for eighty-seven thousand. So that's a fifty-two thousand dollar increase in contracted there. And there's a nine thousand dollar move out of that account. That's why it's not a fifty thousand dollar increase for HRA, which is going to Public Works, I believe.
Household hazardous waste gap put in my budget, but I don't do household hazardous waste, so I asked them, could they remove it? Actually, twenty thousand dollars in the Health Department budget is the town's agreement with the Bethel V and A. And I asked them to also take that twenty thousand dollars out, so you could see what I'm really, the monies I'm really using to do the public health service work in town, to meet the law. Because this isn't, this is to meet the regulations, this wasn't extra or anything.
Do they have to, like, integrate them to be a sanit, like, what are the requirements?
You have to have a bachelor's, you have to have a state, like, a registered sanitarian license, and then you have to have credentials in the variety of topic areas that you sign off or that you work on. So this is professional staff that we're talking about, and these staff, and I, I, I didn't bring copies for you, but I should, on your attachments, is the area staffing of, you know, comparable public health departments. There is a detail on all the hours, so the part-time food inspector takes about a thousand hours and inspects two-hundred-and-thirty-one licensed kitchen areas, and then does the plan reviews, and then does the basics, all right? That doesn't count the outbreaks or any of that. And then, then, and I broke out, walk different staff. So there's another sheet in there that breaks out staff and the type of hours they spend and what they do. And then, the thing that will make Paul really happy is, then there's another sheet that shows work we do, only the work we get paid for, since we do a lot of work we're not paid for. And it shows that our revenue was eighteen thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars with permits that cost fifty dollars and seventy-five dollars. Eighteen thousand nine hundred something. The projected revenue, you will have that as an attachment, that, that Matt thought would be a good idea, is fifty-four, fifty-four nine hundred and thirteen dollars. So with the sanitarians working, there is some revenue that are, we really worked hard to align with the legal mandates of the state.
I want to point out something. If you take your cursor on the worksheet part, and you hover it over the description field in that line that says contracted services, a lot of data comes up. We're gonna transfer that into a document to make that easier to read. Because this is turned into three-point type on this. So, I'll have Bob and Brad do that, because, so it needs to be more like a spreadsheet, so you can more easily see the hours and the cost.
So, I had a spreadsheet like that, that I'd worked up for myself.
Yeah.
I just uploaded it, so under proposals, it's called Health Breakdown. It falls in Open Gov ready.
Oh, it's in there already?
So I just put it in there.
It's the first one.
So if you go back to proposals, where the narrative is, underneath that in the attachments, there's one called Health Breakdown, and that shows the senior.
And will that show the West Nile virus, the courier?
Yep, so it shows West Nile virus is up seventeen hundred, all that. So pretty much, that only looks at the health accounts board, what the sanitarian is in salaries, and contracted, the two main drivers of it.
Just so you could really see all the details. So, a lot of that didn't change, and, you know, so the West Nile virus program didn't really go off. We did have a case last year. We're gonna really get out there and tell people there, not to forget to get rid of stagnant water. It was in a different location than the case from the year before. So, and so when you look, this staff, I kinda tried to give you really the hours of what they're doing and the work that they're doing. And if you have any questions, you can come with us, if you'd like to do rental housing or a food inspection, or if you'd like to any of the services that we do. You're welcome to join us.
Quick question.
I don't think that one will know.
The thirty-four thousand eight hundred eighty-eight, is that because we raised fees on restaurant licenses, yearly fees?
We, we raised all fees.
Yeah, so, you know, we did a thorough evaluation of all of these fees, and I've gotta say, we're back in the twenty-first century and equivalent to surrounding towns, if not a little bit more, a little bit less. It's on an even-type basis right now, so it's, it's been addressed. I, I can't ask my question to Laura, this, this year.
The selectmen, Deion and I, we, and, and some of the work that we do, the nail salons are gonna have a fee now, the pools will have a fee. So things that you brought up, that are, you know, that's state law. It's not my request to you. These staff meet our obligations legally, so we don't have a case. And you could email me, I'd reply to the group through Bob, if you want, to our open.gov, however we do it.
Why do you think this year you could find a full-time sanitarian person when you haven't found one before?
Well, Lisa Morrissey, the Director of Health in City of Danbury, has been teaching at both West Con and New York Med, and we have benefited from that tremendously, on Fridays and nights, and even our food inspector. So, as she's taken that time to breed a new generation of public health professionals, if they're from our area, and as they've come to learn more from vintage public health professionals, they, we've gotten to know people, and we're a great community. I think we have a great rapport with a lot of the clients and residents that we work with. And so I think that they're familiar with us, we don't ask, they're, they're not gonna be afraid, we're gonna ask them to overlook something, and we're, we're gonna be fair. So, and Brad, the Board of Selectmen and Finance was looking even at salary rates. Sometimes we were harmed, but Danbury was too on salary rates, and they looked at that too. So it makes us comparable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Lisa?
Yeah, let's see, who's left?
I'm sorry, we're doing the treasure first.
Okay, I'm Lisa Plum from the Senior Center. Hello. And I'm gonna jump right to the page with the budget. So, as far as capital expenses, I am not asking for anything. We're in pretty good shape in the Senior Center. And for office supplies, we were able to save quite a bit through different means. And for office supplies, we were able to save, um, quite a bit through different means. So I'm asking, we had seventy-five hundred in the budget to go down to forty-five hundred, saving three thousand dollars. And the last thing is in the activity budget, um, in two thousand, in two thousand sixteen, um, we began collecting revenue in the Senior Center by changing the process of how we, um, collect money and, um, different things. Anyway, in two thousand sixteen, we collected thirty-five thousand dollars, two thousand seventeen, thirty-six thousand, and two thousand eighteen, forty-four thousand. So I'm asking to get twenty thousand dollars of that money back and go from sixty thousand in the activity budget to eighty thousand. That money is collected through, um, class fees, membership to the Senior Center, um, van rides, and I need that money to pay instructors, buy supplies, and continue the activity program. So I'm asking to get some of that money back, it's really, ideally would be a zero balance. So I'm not actually asking for additional money, I'm asking for money I've already put in.
But at the same time, you have revenue on the revenue side to accommodate the additional twenty thousand dollars.
Correct.
So of the, for the activities, if you spend sixty thousand dollars, what's the likely revenue to come back to offset that?
So last year it was forty-four thousand.
So it's still costing Bethel money to do the activities, but it's less than your actual budget now? So it's about two-thirds of what you spent?
Is that right?
What was the question, Amy?
We get back, the revenue is about two-thirds.
Yeah, that's what I said, I mean, the revenue is, uh, there's revenue on the revenue side to accommodate the increase in the expenditures.
Right, but it's about two-thirds of what's spent, right? So if you get forty thousand revenue and spend sixty?
Yeah, but this is for next year. So she has increased programs, that she's going to generate more revenue, and we're going to have a higher revenue when we calculate the mill rate on, uh, the Senior Center, just like we have on the, the increased programs, when you see Park and Rec, they're going to be going up two hundred thousand, but their revenue is going to be over six hundred thousand dollars. They're going to like five-ten, and their revenue is going to be six thousand, six hundred thousand. So there's going to be revenue built into the calculation of the mill rate to accommodate these increases in the expenses.
And what will that be? Dee was saying it's only two-thirds return, but you're saying it's more than that. How much, how much do we have in that?
Oh, right now we budget thirty-six thousand dollars in revenue for the Senior Center. Um, she's on pace this year to bring in anywhere from fifty to sixty, probably closer to sixty. So conservatively, we'll probably increase the revenue projection by the same twenty thousand that she's looking to increase the activities for. So it's really, uh, mill rate neutral. Obviously, if she, if the twenty thousand's cut, we're not going to be able to increase the revenue by as much, but...
Brad, I'm sorry, I think maybe picking up on Dee's point, the sixty thousand in the current year generated forty-four, but you're...
No.
No, well, in the current year, she's already generated over thirty thousand dollars in twenty nineteen.
What's the forty-four?
That forty-four thousand isn't going into the budget right now, it's going into a general fund.
I'm sorry, just what year was that forty-four generated?
Two thousand eighteen, last year.
Two thousand eighteen.
Yeah.
So for nineteen fiscal year, she's already generated thirty thousand dollars with the revenue.
So...
But how much of their budget have you spent on activities compared to last year this time? Give us an idea of what the actual, is the increase because we're doing more activities in a short period of time, or is it just an increased interest?
I spend to the penny, don't I, Brad? Pretty close.
So Brad, twenty eighteen, activities was sixty-eight thousand one forty-seven, and what was the income?
For twenty eighteen, that was forty-four thousand.
Okay, so now we've got twenty nineteen, sixty thousand.
Let's find out what we spent.
But that...
First, twenty eighteen's closed, so we have that information. So what Brad just told us is in twenty eighteen, we had activity expenditures of sixty-eight, and we had activity-generated revenue of forty-four. So a loser twenty-two.
I don't think that's right, forty-four thousand never went back in our budget, it went into the general fund, right?
Yeah, but you're getting hung up until the end, Lisa. So what, I know it goes back to the general fund, but it has to, according to the auditors, you can't have revenue in that. You can't net the expenses by the revenue in your budget.
But are those numbers right, Brad, what I just said?
I believe, well, I was looking up something for Brian's question.
Right, can you say around pacing that this year, I just wanted to know, have we done more activities in a shorter period of time?
Well, yeah, so, so far through the first six months of the year, because I don't have access to the lives, just right now, she spent forty-six thousand in activities and brought in thirty out of the sixty thousand.
So it's about the same negative trend here. So what makes us think by adding twenty will close that gap? I think that's...
Actually, I was just kind of observing, if we spend eighty, are we likely to get sixty on the revenue side? Would be my question.
Yeah.
So it's about the same percentage, it's about two-thirds or whatever we spend?
Yeah, it all depends, obviously, um, what programs and how much, you know, if she's adding a brand-new program, it may not perform as well as one that's, the Senior Center's run for ten years, but in theory, it should almost pay for itself, you know?
Similar to Park and Rec, I mean, Park and Rec has the activities. But is there a different way to do the accounting, or we have to do it that way? You have to do it that way, because now we're going to present it to the public, and the public's going to see that, you know, she's looking for another twenty thousand dollars in revenue, but they don't see...
Twenty thousand in expenses.
They don't see the twenty thousand coming in for the, the, on the revenue side, right? They, they only see the...
Expenditures.
Expenditures. Or when you present to the town meeting, do you take that twenty thousand in consideration for, because you, it's not...
You mean in the, uh, the mill rate calculation?
Yeah.
Well, during the town meeting, I, I don't really talk about that part of it, but when we calculate the mill rate, I would do that. I would increase, the, the revenue side would be increased by a certain amount of money.
We, we don't tell them at the town meeting, uh, projected, um, uh, revenue income at the town?
Yeah, you should.
Well, you've got, you've got the, uh, you know, taxes that are going to be collected in, in, to get a governmental, you know, yeah. When that individual items.
And then same thing with Park and Rec.
Yeah, individual item in that number.
Okay, right.
It would just be the, under charges for services.
Yeah.
So, so I guess, I would be interested in what additional programs are you looking to do that would be part of this twenty thousand dollars?
I'm not sure it's additional programs, it's, it's money that we've already, it's money that we've already made that is, is in the budget, that I want to be able to use for the programs, to pay the instructors, to get supplies that they need, things like that.
But I mean, that's the same conversation we have with the library, right? The library brings in money and goes into the general funds. My understanding was that money is not money that the library gets to use.
Right, it's the same with Parks and Recreation, they have, they have programs that are expenses, but they generate fees, and with Park and Rec, it off, it's a complete offset, or nearly, mostly most years it's an offset.
They're almost self-aging, yeah.
So it shows up as a, any increase in the programs shows up as an increase in expenses, but then when they go to calculate the mill rate, that's offset at that level. But it can, to Rich's point, it can be very confusing to the public, and, and we do have to do some kind of a newsletter, something that pulls these things out and shows people, uh, how that, what that dynamic is.
Lisa, I think what the question was, what would your new programs be? Are these new programs additional programs that you're currently running?
There, we could run new programs as well, but it would give us an opportunity to be able to use this money for all kinds of different things, whether it's special events, whether it's new programs, exercise of programs, new equipment, you know?
See, I think what I'm struggling with is I, I take your point, Lisa, if there's money being generated in prior years, but in prior years there were expenses as well. So in the prior years, there was forty-seven thousand dollars of income generated at a cost of sixty thousand. So there's really no extra money kind of sloshing around in the system, it was actually subsidiary, uh, subsidies, subsidizing on that fee of about thirteen thousand. So I think we're just trying to figure out if there's another twenty thousand of activities, will that generate another twenty thousand dollars of revenue? Or will it kind of continue the pattern out the way it had in the past and generate something less than the twenty thousand?
Honestly, I don't know the answer to that. If, um, if you put a twenty thousand, are you asking, am I going to make another twenty thousand off of that?
Yeah, that's what we're asking.
So the, so the...
Well...
You know, you just mentioned you might have to buy equipment, so you're not going to recoup the, the cost of the equipment.
So prior to two thousand sixteen, there was no money coming in revenue.
Yeah, it was just all...
From the Senior Center, there was zero. Okay, so as of two thousand sixteen, thirty-five thousand came in, that was not there before. Am I correct, Brad, right?
So what used to happen in the Senior Center is the instructors were paid out of the money that was coming in. So cash was coming, someone would come and pay three bucks for a class, at the end, the instructor would get that money. When Bob and I found out about that, we said, no, 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 we can't do it that way. I think Lisa brought it up to us, because she wasn't comfortable with it. So what really ended up having to happen is her activities, which used to be a budget of thirty thousand, went up to sixty thousand as that now, but when we did that, we put on, in the revenue calculation, thirty-six thousand dollars of revenue.
So that's, stop right there, just...
Yeah.
So that suggests a loss of twenty-four thousand.
Yeah, it used to be a loss of thirty thousand.
Fair enough.
Because it used to just run and not have any revenue.
Just want to make sure I was...
Yeah, yeah. So it's always been a service, it's not always been budget neutral, because the, uh, Senior Center offers services, just like Park and Rec offers services. Um, so I don't think Lisa's goal is to run it at a zero-sum game.
A break even.
A break even, but I do think she wants to offer more activities, so by increasing her budget, she is going to bring in more revenue because she charges for most of the classes.
However, anything I've started in the last seven years when I've been there has been a zero balance. So I pay my instructors according to how much money I take in for the program, and that's been a zero balance. The money that's, the, the instructors that have been there for years and years are out of the activity budget. But that's what I try to do for programs going forward, is I pay them according, I have to have a minimum amount of people in that program to run it. If I don't, I don't run the program, or they get paid with the money that comes in. And I don't, you know, I don't take money out of the budget for the new programs, I have two or three new programs every month, and that's how I run it.
So Lisa, if I could add to what, it really, that activities account's really two different things. She has a portion of it, which used to be thirty thousand dollars before we changed and brought the revenue on. That was just services that the Senior Center provided. And then she also has the class portion, which sounds like runs net zero on it.
Some programs, not all.
Right, for the most part, yeah. Some make money, some lose money, you know? So then, under this budget, if the revenue goes up to fifty thousand dollars, and her activities goes up to eighty thousand, that services part is still the thirty thousand that it used to be.
I think what might be helpful is if we create a balance sheet and show revenue generating programs versus non-revenue services that are offered, so just to more clearly delineate it. We could, we can take care of that.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll put it in here, but we'll email it around to you guys too, so you can see it. I think that'll help clear it up a lot.
I have, I have a question. So these activities, if, if you get twenty thousand or more, do you decide at the beginning of the fiscal year what activities? Or how, how do you program that? Like if you were going to add new activities, because I was talking about new activities.
So if I'm adding new activities, like I just said, most of the activities are paying for themselves with a zero balance. So I charge the members how much I need to run the program and pay the instructor.
So what I'm asking is when do you decide what the, I mean, is it, as it goes along, like to decide every two months another activity? Or do you do something for the whole year that says we're going to have all these activities?
Um, I do both, I do all the trips and special events for the whole year at one time. I do programs every two months, our newsletter comes out, and I do new activities. There's always something new, every, every month, there's a new activity added.
Okay, my other question is, and this is because somebody asked me, um, can anyone, I mean, is it limited to Bethel residents, the Bethel Senior Center?
It's not, they have to be fifty years and older, but out-of-town residents pay a membership fee, Bethel...
Okay.
Residents are free.
How much is that?
Twenty dollars a year.
Okay. Does that cover, like, does that be cover whatever they might participate in, that would be free?
No, it covers their newsletter, and it covers them attending the Senior Center. And about half of the programs are free to go to, um, and then they have to pay a fee, just like everybody else, for all the other classes that charge a fee. Some are two dollars, three dollars, four dollars is the most we charge.
Right, what I'm asking is, so they're not free, I mean, they're free meaning that a person can just not pay to go, to be involved in a free activity, which costs the town, it doesn't cost the person?
That's correct.
Okay.
So some of those programs that are free are because they're run by volunteer instructors. For example, computer, genealogy are run by volunteers, there's no cost to the town.
Are, are all the free programs like that, run by volunteers? The free, when I say free, I mean, free to the participants.
There's about forty activities a week, um, and I would say, I can't think of any that aren't run by a volunteer that we don't charge if it's run by a volunteer.
Okay, so is that what determines whether it's free or not, is if it's run by a volunteer?
Um, yeah, I guess so, unless there's any cost associated with running the program that, like Wii games are free, except I charge them two dollars. It's free as far as there's no instructor there, but I charge two dollars, so when the machine breaks down and I need to buy a new machine, I have money to do that.
Yeah, I understand, I'm only pressing it because I'm thinking, not that like, you know, a hundred people from Beth, uh, from Danbury are going to rush the building for Senior Center privileges, but, you know, if, if it is twenty dollars for an out-of-town resident, I just want to know that twenty dollars...
Covers.
Covers them for any free activity they might want to participate in.
I mean, some come honestly and just socialize, but have coffee every day, so that helps defray the coffee cost a little bit, you know?
The twenty dollars a year, yeah, I, because I would, I would hate to think that, you know, that we would be, um, subsidizing out-of-town residents at the Senior Center in Bethel.
Right, I understand, yeah.
And you're saying that doesn't happen?
I guess it happens, but, um, I think them paying the twenty-dollar fee, I think it's kind of, it helps overall. Out-of-town residents help us when we go on our trips, we probably couldn't take a lot of trips with just Bethel residents, we wouldn't have enough people to fill the bus, be able to go, have a minimum amount, um, to go to these different things. So out-of-town residents definitely help us with the trips, um...
Do other towns have out of, allow out-of-town residents?
They all do with the exception, exception of Richfield, because they're a private organization, it's not run by the town.
So I...
But they all, most all of them charge a membership fee. We were actually, I think, the last one to do that.
So do you see any impact to our program once the new center in Newtown opens up?
Yeah, there's going to be a big impact. Right now, what happened is, um, the, um, Senior Center Director in Newtown just left, um, and it wasn't a favorable departure, um, and so we've got a big slew the past few weeks from Newtown, because they're all, um, protesting the Newtown Senior Center. It's a very, very small center, they don't have the ability to do a lot of activities there because of the size of what they have. But anytime you open a state-of-the-art, beautiful new facility, people want to see what it is. And I'm sure we're going to have a lot of people going over there to check it out, but I'm very confident that we're running an excellent program now compared to other towns. Um, and so they may go over to see, but I think they'll be back.
How many members do you have?
Um, fourteen hundred, um, we get about four hundred, um, a month, it's, it's in the narrative. Um, we offer about forty programs a week, um, we're very, very busy, especially with the van now, which I have to tell you, I appreciate, um, that you allowed the van to go through, um, a year ago, because the people call and are so grateful to have that van service, to go to doctors, there's people that couldn't go to the food, to get food, to go to the food pantry before, so it's a, a very vital service, and we appreciate that very much. People constantly call, are very grateful to that.
Lisa, are there any fees associated with the vans?
The van is free, but we ask for a two-dollar donation, which is in the grant, um, requirement that we can't have a fee for the van, but we can't ask for a donation. And that seems to be what they suggested, a two-dollar donation, is similar to what Heart Bus and Sweetheart Bus does. So the people that can't pay, no questions are asked, and that's fine, they can ride the bus. There's people that ride... There's people that ride it totally for free. Most people give a donation and some people give more because they're able to. Somebody that can't buy food, they ride the bus for free and it's absolutely fine.
And where's maintenance go on it? That goes to?
It goes to the town garage.
Kind of garage for maintenance and gas.
And we have a schedule and, yeah, there's forms we fill out quarterly. I submit forms to the state on who's riding it, what their ethnic, you know, how many trips everybody's riding to, where are they going, things like that, so.
Any more questions? Good job, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Well, why don't we do one hundred? Because that's easy. There's not, there's no change in it, except the salary increase that the sports have generously put forth last year. And I, I do want to commend the board for that. Not only personally, but I think it's important for the future to compensate the position so that you attract people who want to run for it. And I think Bill Kingston said that years ago, and I agreed with him a hundred percent. I will put in a word, I did not put a number in, but at the next opportunity when that is, I will put in a good word for my two colleagues. The other two selectmen are heavily involved in, in town operations. You can kind of consider the Board of Selectmen, although it does have some legislative authority that's, limited legislative authority that's granted by the charter. It really is the executive branch of town government. And they spend an awful lot of time in the building, in the trades, working with the building committee and with the utilities. And it, it might even be appropriate at some point in the future for us to, you know, on this side, to look at prorating some of their site and over to the utility side. Because that is a, it's a huge part of what they do. So anyway, that's, that's basically it. No other changes in the budget, no surprises. So, you guys have any questions?
Are we going to keep these guys under here?
These guys?
No, selectmen.
Well, I hope so. Anyway, thank you. And.
Is there any breakdown of the salaries or is this in this program? Do we just, they're going to do something wrong?
I can, I can, I can get that for you.
No, but the program does not have a breakdown of salaries.
Thank you, that's all I know.
Yeah.
Okay, so when, if we have a breakdown, how, Lou would just ask you?
Yeah. Yeah, Brad, Brad.
Could you give us a breakdown?
Of this turn?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
All right, so Bob, you're up.
Before, before we start, I would suggest let's just take a five-minute break. Kind of stand up and stretch legs and then come back.
Sing a couple songs?
I can do that too. Okay, let's do just five minutes.
All right. So we're in recess, thank you.
So, yeah, recess is the positive. Can I get a new?
Okay.
We're at forty-one thousand already this year.
Okay, are we live?
Yeah.
Okay, so we are back in live session and I will turn the floor over to Mr. Kozlowski to cover two-ten, four-hundred, three-ninety, four-forty, four-twenty.
Four-ten.
And four-ten.
Are we doing first two-ten?
So, four-ten, utilities and other charges.
Yep.
We have included in that account is gasoline, fuel oil, utilities and streetlights. So gasoline, our price has gone from a dollar eighty-nine to two-forty-four-seven-oh. And on the diesel, we've gone from one-ninety-eight to two-point-six-six-three-nine. Using pretty much the same usage, fifty-five thousand gallons and twenty thousand gallons. There's an increase in the total cost there from one-forty-one to one-eighty-seven. Fuel oil, there isn't many areas that we're using this anymore, but we still need about fifteen thousand gallons and that price has gone from one-seventy-two a gallon to two-point-three-eight-six-six. And then we also have propane in there for seven thousand gallons, uh, seven thousand dollars. So there's a slight increase in that account from forty-one-five to forty-two-eight. Utilities, which includes electric, natural gas, telephones and water charges either by the town of Bethel or Aquarian, is up slightly from two million, two-thirty-five to two million, two-seventy-four. And this also includes the payments, the Bank of America, lease payments that we have to make, that goes against the utility account and that's about a hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand twice a year, so about two-hundred-sixty-six thousand in round numbers. And then the streetlights, we've kept it at a hundred thousand dollars. I know there's LEDs out there, but just looking at that account right now, we're at forty-one thousand, almost forty-two thousand dollars. So if you prorate that over the rest of the year, you're gonna be somewhere around eighty-five thousand. So a hundred thousand dollar estimate is probably a good number at this point, so.
Bob, why did this go up so much in twenty-seventeen?
What was that?
Why did the streetlights go up so much in twenty-seventeen?
Yeah, it goes from forty-eight thousand to seventy-four thousand.
I don't, I don't, I don't know if that forty-seven thousand again is a correct number. I don't know if Open Gov is pulling out the right numbers. It's, it's been historically pretty much the same number, or somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars.
I could actually answer that. We had a new purchasing agent and as they were getting up to speed, some of the streetlight bills, because they all come from EverSource, so you really have to decipher what account it's supposed to going to. So I'm sure a good chunk of streetlight bills went against the utilities account, five-three-two-one.
Uh, okay.
So it's not like we didn't pay it, it just came out of a different account.
I have two questions. Why crazy, the crazy increase in gasoline? I mean, it, I know it goes up, but that seems really extraordinary.
Well, you remember back in the fall, price of gasoline was quite higher than what it is today.
Yes.
And at that point, we were advised by our broker that it was probably gonna go even higher, so we locked in for a year.
Okay.
I mean, if we didn't, we probably wouldn't have the, the numbers that we have in here right now. It might be closer to last, last year's numbers.
Okay, so it's a, like a cautionary move.
Yep.
Um, how, uh, okay, I guess I had three questions. The utilities, how do we, where do we get a breakdown of what it is for all the different utilities?
Well, it's pretty much the same breakdown as last year, the categories, but, um, you know, I, I take the actual cost for each one of those categories and then I come up with the, a budget and amount.
No, I understand, but how do we know what portion of that is electric versus?
Electric at right now is considered one million, one-sixty-five.
I'm sorry, say that again?
One million, one-sixty-five, up from one million, one-fifty-three.
So it's up, the, so you're talking electricity?
Yep.
And it's up. So why would it be up?
Uh, electric prices went up, the contract also went up. We, I, the old contract was seven-point-one and we're a little bit over eight cents a kilo hour, a kilowatt hour now.
Is, is that net of the solar farm though?
No, well, um, I'm, I'm not sure if you're crediting that revenue from there or it goes into the general fund.
I would be very interested to know that relationship of the solar farm versus the increase of, I would, is that possible to find that out?
We, we can get that, we can get that.
Yeah, it would just be interesting because the whole idea of the solar farm is to offset the expenses of electricity.
But the budget, they would have to go by historical, what we're paying.
I think right now, right now, we've only received a few months of rebates from them. It hasn't been a lot.
All right. My next question is, why are the streetlights out from other, is that the only outdoor lighting we have are streetlights, or why is that its own category?
I don't know, it's a good question. I mean, that's, it's always been in the budget that way, is streetlights, so that's.
Okay. Is it a project at one point that we wanted to track costs on or something?
I don't know.
It's always been.
Does CLP charge a different rate for the streetlights?
Well, they charge a different rate for light.
They used to, yeah. I think it was hardcoded in the old budget system, but I don't know why.
Accounting would love if the board wants to move those back together.
Hey, well.
It'd be a lot easier on our part, so.
Make it easy for Brad, let's just push him up.
Yeah, but then you're mistaking it with buildings and stuff like that.
We still track each individual bill. Each individual EverSource bill gets coded into a spreadsheet, so we have it by account.
I like the spotlight one.
Okay, all right. All right, that's all I have.
Okay, any other questions? Next one is four-twenty miscellaneous charges and transfers. This includes a contingency account for sixty thousand, which is the same every year. Wage adjustments, which represents the dollars that we put aside for negotiations and this year we have three negotiations in place, police, office and also public works. But the police is two years, so we have to include last year's numbers as well as the current year because they'll get a retroactive payment when, if the contract is settled. So that number's two-eighty-seven, five-seventy-one, up from one-eighty-three, five-twenty-nine. And the town hall expense, which covers copy of leases, office supplies, postage and publications. Mostly that's the legal ads in the newspaper, the News Times, that's at thirty thousand dollars. And then we have the capital number recurring, which last year was five-hundred thousand dollars. And this year, I increased it by a hundred-and-fifty to six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars because the goal is always to try to get that close to a number where we can use it to make substantial purchases during the year. And then capital equipment for twenty-five hundred dollars. So the account is up two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, the bulk of it is the hundred-and-fifty from the transfer capital account. So it goes from seven-seventy-six to a million, oh, thirty. And really, it's two accounts that are causing the wage adjustments and the capital number recurring.
I think I know this, but the wage adjustments, is that where things, don't you hold some things there until some, like, things are approved, like insurance rates and stuff like that? Is that why that?
Labor negotiations.
Okay, and so that's why that?
Yeah.
Is up?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we have three contracts.
Yeah.
Currently, we have, well, we, we have the police negotiations currently in process.
Right.
And we just got a demand for negotiations on the public works and also the clerical union. So that, they'll be starting within the next month or so. Those contracts, the other two contracts, public works and clerical expire June thirtieth to this year.
Right, so how much you have in here would depend on the, which contracts are coming up to renew or whatever.
Correct, mhm.
All right, thank you. So, so we're not likely to use all of that money, but it's in there in case.
That's right.
Correct.
And Bob, is, with capital not recurring, are you beginning or have you put together a list of kind of all the pending projects that are out there that we would expect this number to cover?
Yes.
Of the six-hundred-and-fifty?
Yeah.
There's an idea where, what we can use the money for.
We'll see that kind of as the process unfolds.
Yeah, and we, there's actually a lot more need than that as usual, but that, yes, the.
All right, so a big account, four-forty, debt services. This account is up.
Hold on, you have.
One million, two-seventy-nine. The, the two big items to start off with is the two thousand and eighteen bonds, the principal payment on that is a million dollars and that's for twenty years. And that includes the police department. We bonded some of the debt on the renovations of the school already because rates were starting to move. And then also there was some short-term borrowing that we converted to a long-term bond. In addition to the principal, you have the interest cost and that interest cost is eight-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. And then the other items are made up with, the short-term debt is in at six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand and the interest on the short-term notes is two-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand. The town side of the, the short-term debt is three-point-eight million dollars, but we already have ten million dollars out there for renovations. We will be borrowing more in July as the project escalates. And then moving on down, we have the two-hundred, uh, two thousand and fourteen refunding, there's interest on that of forty-one thousand, two-forty-four and a principal payment of, there is no principal payment on that one. The two-fifteen refunding, there's interest of five-fifty-nine, nine-and-four and a principal payment of nine-fifteen. And then the two thousand and ten refunding, principal payment of eight-forty-five and interest of ninety-nine thousand. So our debt service is going from three-point-nine, thirty-nine to five-point-two, nineteen, up It's, it's one of the bigger, bigger increases in the budget this year.
What does that equate to, like, one mil? One mil or three-quarters of a mil, something like that?
About three-quarters.
Yeah, probably closer to three-quarters, yeah, yeah.
Right, and then, this is what we talked about right at last town meeting in last year's budget process. This is the coming online of the police station and the beginning of the school. So the two million dollar bond principal down the bottom, I think this board knows about or, and we've talked about. I guess about the question that I have is, look, we've done a great job in bringing down short-term debt, right? When, when this board convened for the first time, there was ten-point-five million in short-term debt, we're at three-point-eight now. Now, that's not the school short-term debt, that's kind of expenditure short-term.
That's right.
Last year, and I think this year, we'll continue to refer to as credit card debt. We're paying down here six-hundred-and-fifty thousand. What's, what's the plan for paying off that three-point-eight million before another cycle hits?
There are some monies in the bond premiums that we received when we did the bonding. I'm thinking maybe we can use some of that with your approval to, in addition to the six-fifty, maybe bring it up to a million or maybe even twelve-hundred, one-point-two million. But that would be out of a separate category, so you'd have the six-fifty here and you have another five-fifty coming out of the bond premiums to pay down the short-term debt.
That's assuming we don't have any capital requests in this year's budget, which.
Assuming, yeah, but you do.
I think that would be a real bad assumption.
Very, yeah.
That still doesn't get us to paying off the three-point-eight as a June thirtieth, twenty-twenty.
Not, no, no. We would have to work with that probably a few more years before you would zero that out, but the challenge I always said was, what are we gonna do currently with any capital projects going forward? You know, I think rough number in the capital plan right now is about eight million dollars. So.
Is that long-term kind of spending or is that repair-based kind of spending?
Well, I mean, you call the fire engines a long-term and, you know, the big trucks, the plow trucks, I mean, the big plow trucks, I mean, he's looking for a million dollars. The two, two, two fire trucks together are about three million dollars. So that's half of that eight million.
By long-term, it could be five years, correct? I mean, we wouldn't.
Yeah, those trucks would.
We wouldn't suggest doing a twenty-year bond on a fire truck.
No, 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 no.
The bond, the fire truck will be gone before the debt's gone.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I think we're just using common terminology, long-term being anything less than a year, right? Or short-term being anything less than a year. Well, let's see how this develops, but to me.
I think we have to talk about that.
Right, if we think about economic cycles, this is our safety money.
Mhm.
Right, being able to raise short-term debt to get over recession periods, you gotta get rid of what's out there now.
Mhm, mhm. But then you also have to have a plan to move forward.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And that's part of why capital not recurring, why that needs.
Well, that has to go up, you know, and we were talking about the fire trucks, not the fire trucks, but the plow trucks today. We had a representative from Peterborough and, and maybe, you know, even if we had a lease on one of them, put it into the budget and start to build the budget up like we do with the roads and the capital not recurring to a point where we can lease the trucks. I mean, those are big, big numbers, but if you can get that into the budget, then at least you don't have to borrow it anymore, it's already there.
But leasing trucks.
Is gonna be expensive.
But no, it's the equivalent of borrowing money, it's just switching it over and.
To the bu, to the budget, yeah.
It give you, it's like a good way to infuse a lot of vehicles quickly in a municipal fleet. That's why some departments choose a lease, but it's not like, it's not a lease that we're gonna turn in at the end of the five years. It's, it's yours for, you know what I mean?
You, you're gonna lease it for, well, it's gonna be leased for five years, it becomes your vehicle and it, and it's gonna last fifteen years or better, hopefully.
It's just, it's just moving a short-term debt into an operating budget.
That's all.
You know, we're talking about it. It's still the same thing.
In fact, it, it's the equivalent of a loan at a much higher implicit interest rate.
I mean, they were talking, they were talking around five, five and a quarter.
Right, that's two percentage points.
Higher than what we borrow. Mhm. So that's, that's service.
Can we, can we kind of work toward sketching out a plan to get rid of that short-term debt, that three-point-eight? And we will understand what the premium balances are.
I think we can, I think we can do something like we were planning last year on, you know.
My recollection.
But, but I, again, it's not gonna happen overnight, I think it's gonna be a few years before you can actually eliminate it.
That just seems too long to me. Right, if that's our, that, right, that's, those are expenses we, the town made back now, eight, nine, ten years ago.
Mhm.
And we've been carrying it on the credit card for the whole period.
Luckily, we were able to get a very.
Did really well these first three years, yeah.
Mhm, mhm.
It just seems that we should strive, again, to get rid of that three-eight, whether it's, you know, it's gonna be part current income, part fund balance, continue to use the fund balance.
Mm.
But we, I think really need to get rid of that short-term debt sooner as opposed to later, two, three, four years out, I think it's just too long. We gotta really be thinking about getting rid of it at the end of twenty-twenty.
Any questions? The next one is three-ninety employee benefits. Um, let me just get to that. So one of the first categories is FICA, which is social security. That's based on the total payroll, payroll goes up, so that number has moved from seven-fifty-two to seven-eighty-four. Hospitalization, our total cost looks to be the estimate for this coming year, two-point-eight, last year was two-point-seven. We're looking at from the partnership, um, um, plan, an increase of around seven, seven-and-a-half percent. But overall, if you use these numbers, it's not gonna be seven-and-a-half. I, I think the two-point-eight, fifty-nine is a good number going forward with the budget. And then from the actuarial reports, for the police pension and the, and the employee pension, we have a million ninety-nine for the police and one million, four-forty-nine for the employee pension. So those are numbers that we have to set aside for pension, for the future. So the increase in this account is two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars, it's roughly a five-percent increase, but this increase is coming from the pension plan increases. Police weren't that bad, it was about thirty thousand dollars. On the town side, it's about a hundred-and-ten thousand dollars increase according to the actuarial reports. And then hospitalization's up about, about a hundred-and-ten as well. So if we, we're at a point where we only have one union left that's not in the partnership plan, so if we, we're able to move them, then possibly that cost will come down, but at this point, we can't, we can't budget a lower figure.
And Bob, the pension contributions, are they at the actual, actuarially determined minimum amounts or are they above minimum contribution?
This is the minimum. So if there's any extra money, which, you know, there might have been a couple, a couple of years ago, we did make an extra payment. This is, this is the payment that the bonding companies wanna see you make.
At the minimum.
At the minimum, yep.
Where, where do those plans stand as far as?
Funding. Town is probably around eighty-four percent funded and the police a little bit less, around seventy-seven, seventy-eight percent. I, I think if we go back to two thousand and ten, two thousand and nine, when Matt first started, it was around forty-nine, fifty percent funded. So we've come a long way.
So are these comfortable levels for now?
Very comfortable for municipalities, yes, yep.
Right now, the school is on our same health insurance plan, correct?
No, they had their own.
So we bid, we bid our own group for town.
That's right.
So we don't combine for.
No, they have theirs and we have ours, they pay for their own and we pay for our own.
But it's not the same company is what I'm saying.
Except, no, they're on a partnership plan too. The only difference with their partnership plan is their dental, they have a different dental plan than we have.
Now, is there any fear that the school may switch over to the state plan, which will kind of.
That is a state, the partnership plan is a state plan.
So you already went to the state.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
I, I know what's going on in Richfield, so.
Are, are, are the premiums?
Our schools abandoned the town, so now our premiums going up like a hundred percent because we didn't have a big year for our employees, so by losing this, the town's gonna make that change.
So just to clarify, the school and the town employees are on the same partnership plan or they're two different partnerships?
No, it's a state.
It's a state partnership plan.
Everybody's on the state.
Yeah, it is, there's a number of municipalities that are on it.
What's the average cost for a family on that plan, just out of curiosity?
I think it's around twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five, let's see.
Total contribution or what the town?
Total, and then we, we negotiate reimbursement from the employees.
And it's not, that's a point-of-service plan, right? Those aren't health savings plans?
No, point-of-service, yeah.
It's a point-of-service.
So are you saying that the Board of Ed negotiates a separate? Okay, that's.
No, there's no negotiation on these plans.
No, no, what we were talking about was, in Richfield, our Board of Ed left us.
Right.
So now the town, we're standing alone while the Board of Ed, that's a state plan. So the insurance company looks at us and says, you've had a horrible year and there's only a hundred-and-fifty of you, we're not taking that risk unless you give us a huge increase in premiums, so that was why I was asking.
Okay.
So Bethel already went for the state plan.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I think we're, we're, we're starting our third year on it, right?
At the end of this year, we, yeah, the third year.
So we're, yeah, we're, second year.
Twenty-five is a premium.
And what do the town and the teachers or the, the education employees contribute? What's their percentage of contribution?
Oh, I.
It all, it varies according to the union agreement.
Yeah.
It could be eighteen, twenty, twenty-two percent.
Yeah, they're, they're around twenty, I think, of Board of Ed.
Board of Ed's a little bit higher than us.
Board of Ed is around twenty.
Higher. No, I think they're, they're, they're into the twenty-two, twenty-four range.
And then what town employees are?
Uh, I would say eighteen to twenty. Typically, you know, if you got a three-year contract, you try to go eighteen, nineteen, twenty or sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
And, and have we ever looked at whether that's consistent with what happens in private industry?
Private industry, I mean, you're paying a lot more, a lot more.
And, so have we looked at that in terms of like wage, wages for private sector versus public sector, insurance, private sector versus the, the total compensation?
There's reports that we, when we're negotiating, we, we receive from CCM that show anticipated minimum, medium and maximum raised increases, contribution to pension plans, contributions to medical plans and things like that. And, and it's broken down by different type of, different towns and towns that are in your category, so.
We get a, we get a data report every thirty days that shows every public sector settlement in the whole state, every arbitration award and, and analysis of it. So that goes into Bob's office and Phyllis Kansky's office in, in terms of preparing for next negotiations. So I, I would say over the last nine years, we've really brought our, our plans pretty much even with most other towns. Prior to that, there was really no, as far as I could tell, going back to two thousand and ten, very little effort to look at plan design to see, because the industry, you know, even in the, in the private sector, it started earlier, but even in the public sector, has been to try to negotiate those costs down. And none of that was happening for a long time, so. And the thing, I mean, you're, you're working in the public sector too with the university, when you go through negotiations, as, as I know Brian knows too, you ask for this much and you get this much. So it's like, you, you have to, you know, we have labor attorneys who work with us and they keep meticulous records on negotiation history. So we're trying to move the needle as far as we can with every single round. So over the past ten years, we've really brought them back in line. I think ten years ago, employees weren't contributing more than, what was it, eight or nine percent?
I think back then, it might have been even six percent.
Yeah, five or six, I mean, it's.
Wow, those were the days.
Yeah, it's, I mean, we, we're really trying to, really trying to be, you know, we, we wanna be fair to employees, you know, you wanna have a competitive wage, you don't, we're not out to take, take things away from people, but we don't wanna be overly generous with taxpayers' money either, we wanna be fair. So that's what we've been trying to do.
Bobby looks, looks like OPEB's in therapy with the sheriff again?
Um, yeah, we, we didn't budget anything this year or last year for that. We pretty much, the retirees pay into the medical plan, which is here too. So those dollars that we receive from them reduce the hospitalization cost here. So if there's money available during the course of the year, if it looks like, let's say for instance, we switch one of the unions over to their partnership plan and we have a little savings, we may move that money into OPEB.
Is that, my recollection is, last year, we were, if you put it in the equivalent of a normal pension, very well-funded. Is it still the case that it's very well-funded?
Yes, it's with the same, it's with Morgan Stanley, Mike Fort, same fellow, so, and he's doing well with it, you know, so.
Great, thank you.
Next account is two-ten, which is town insurance. It's an easy one, no changes. Actually, actually, workers comp, they. Actually, actually, workers' comp, they recommended a 5% reduction. But with the increases, I left it flat, with the increases in wages, because workers' comp is based on wages, it may come up a little bit, so it may not be at 5%, it may only be a 1% or a 2% reduction, so I just left it flat at this point. And the last one, 400, non-government subsidies?
We don't have it, we don't have it under, we don't have it.
What's it, Mr. Jones?
Or... Oh, it's not non-government, what, can we do it? It's supposed to be, I think, 4 or 5, intergovernment.
I got it, 405.
Yes, we can't do all that, that's a mistake.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we can do it. It's a special meeting.
Wait, is that, is that just a typo?
Maybe it's a typo.
Because there's no such thing as 400, right?
No, there isn't.
No, no, we can, we can do it, it's just a, yeah.
Alright.
Does this make it, make what did, adjust the GMS to 405?
Yeah.
405 are, there's a slight increase in this, $3,700. CCM dues that, we belong to CCM in cost, those dues have remained constant from year to year. The Hart bus and the Sweetheart bus has gone up slightly. Hart has gone up from 47.6 to 49,000. And Sweetheart has gone from 82.8 to 85.1. West Cog, which is another organization we belong to, is at 9,500, same as last year. Memorial Day and Veterans Assistance, they're, they're the same, 4,350. And Civic Improvements is $3,400 as well. Paramedic Intercept, 275,000. And Northwest Communication, 7,500.
Bob, is Veterans Assistance, is that like, just kind of like 350,000? It's not like a lot, I'm just wondering where that goes, but is there like a group that all the towns belong to that?
That, you know...
That's a state mandate.
That's, I think that's the program with the veterans. It's on Main Street, and if a veteran passes away, he gets, it's not the Memorial Day flag, but they get a plaque at the gravesite. And it's dues that we pay to be plotted at, and, and the federal government pays for the footstone.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I think the year before last, the state said that every town must assign a veterans coordinator, veterans, like a, a veterans advocate. So John Sardlin is our, so he keeps track of this stuff, he does a good job.
Is paramedic, paramedic intercept, is that what we have to call another town for?
No.
I don't know what that is.
That's our advanced life support with the ambulance. So we have, you might see the vehicles outside, the white. One stays sometimes at the police department or over here. We have three vehicles on call at all times. They're serviced by the hospital, but we supply the vehicles and all the support that goes along with the hospital. And that costs us 275,000 a year. We get reimbursed from the fire departments, Stony Hill and Bethel, if it's an ALS call. If it's basic life support, we don't receive anything from them. But on ALS, when the paramedic goes from the vehicle, the paramedic vehicle, onto the ambulance, then the, the insurance reimburses us a small amount of money.
Are you familiar with how that, how that intercept process works?
Not exactly, no.
In most big cities, when an ambulance is dispatched, you'll have an EMT and a paramedic. So, you know, one is more highly trained than the other. So an EMT call is basic life support, a paramedic call is advanced life support. To do that here would cost us about a million, somewhere between a million and 1,400 per year. So most smaller towns in Connecticut have what they call an intercept service. So we have two fire companies that run volunteer ambulances. When a call comes in, depending on what the call is, they will dispatch the ambulance. But let's say if somebody says, 63-year-old male, chest pain, you know, possible heart attack, they will automatically dispatch the paramedic. So instead of riding on the ambulance, they get in their paramedic car and they meet them on-site, that's why it's called intercept.
Okay, I got it, yeah.
So then, not everything is dispatched with a paramedic. Sometimes when the first responders come to a site, I remember getting a call that two cyclists were hit by a car. You know, they thought it was a basic call at first, and then when, when the first police officer, by the way, our officers have special training. When they got to the site, they evaluated, then they called for the paramedic who came a few minutes later. So this is more economical, but even with insurance reimbursement, and Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement, it doesn't cover the total cost of it, so there is a subsidy that we have to put into it.
Don't we share it with Reddit?
We do.
We share the cost of the vehicles and stuff like that?
Yeah, in fact, we just negotiated a new MOU on that, so.
It's, it's based on the core volume. We do about 80%, they do 20%.
Yeah, Weston used to do a little both.
Bob, my, my recollection might be...
Excuse me?
Yeah. My, my recollection is we budgeted 275, but it cost us more than that.
You know, the, the cost has come down a little bit. We, we used to run a deficit around 75, 80,000. Now it's probably around 25.
Why don't we make this 300 then?
We could. We could.
That's, I mean, that's what we think it's the cost of us.
Mm-hmm. I'll make that change. Yeah, gas, oil, maintenance and repairs, and the cost of the vehicle.
Yeah, then there is a revenue offset that comes, comes in, right?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
And then they have their own fee with the Danbury Hospital. We pay $33,000 a month, which is built into the program, it's not the 275. And they pay, I think, 11,000 or 12,000 a month.
Yeah, Reddit pays that.
Reddit, Reddit.
Where's, where's that number? Where's the 33, where's that number? Where's 33 fit in here?
If it's not in the...
That comes out of the paramedic program, which is going against the 275.
It goes against that?
Yeah.
I thought you said it didn't.
So, so you got the 275 as revenue coming in. You got, you got money coming from Bethel, and also from Stony Hill, okay? Yeah, those three up, and then that's where we wind up with a net loss of about 25,000 after expenses.
I have a question, you know, stick with your formality, so I'm wondering, can, can the chairman of the, the board of finance just say to the controller, put that up to 300, and that's okay? I just wanna know.
I mean, it's only for budgeting purposes right now, just for now. It's only for budgeting purposes right now.
No, I understand that.
You'll make, you'll make the decision later on whether or not you want it.
I understand that, it just seems like if, you know, it's like just a person-to-person recommendation, it doesn't seem like it's any sort of... Do you know what I'm getting at? I could say anything I want, I could say, could you put that up to, put it down something?
You can bring it down?
Well, I mean, try it, we're not hoping on it.
No, no, I mean, and you're gonna, you're gonna receive it next week or whenever to, to, you know, go over the entire budget and vote on whether you not want the 25,000 increase or not, that's all.
My suggestion is just based on the fact that we have history that says the 275 isn't sufficient.
It's nothing to do with your suggestions, it's to do with procedure, that's my only...
I think it's perfectly fine.
As individuals?
As a member of the board.
Maybe if you have some action.
Structure chart, version of reports.
It's helpful.
Right, so give him a call tomorrow. I'm just saying, it doesn't seem a little...
Okay, any other, any other, so you're done now, right?
I'm done.
Any other questions? Alright, then, for Board of Selectmen, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Same motion of the board to adjourn?
So the favor?
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Hi. Sorry, who first and second, Board of Directors?
Robert as the first, and Claudia as the second.
I made that change.